Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order since it's six o'clock. Thank you all for being here tonight as we pilot this new community forum meeting format. And thank you to staff and to council members Benjamin and Weiner and former council member Friend for working with staff for over a year to bring this new meeting format forward. To ensure we have a productive first forum, I would like to highlight a few expectations for tonight. Although this is a new format, we will adhere to our standard community participation guidelines. Would you like to read them, Miss Yelisha, or would you like me to?
I can read them, ma'am. Thank you. Sorry about that, everyone, and good evening, and thank you for joining us. I will now share with you the public participation at city council meeting guidelines. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision of productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and city council members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. The following are examples of rule of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this visions. These will be upheld during this meeting. Our remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct a meeting are prohibited. Thank you again for listening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. The meeting tonight will be facilitated by city staff and Derek Okubo. I will maintain the meeting such that all voices are heard, city business is handled, no one is intimidated, and there is respect for all points of view. The city council has adopted these rules of decorum so that business is conducted in an orderly manner. If attendees obstruct the business of the meeting, the council will take a recess and may clear the chambers of everyone who is not staff or a participant. To make sure we are all on the same page, I will issue one additional warning prior to taking a recess due to a disruption. If we need to take a second recess, I will ask the chambers be cleared. Please head into tonight with a spirit of curiosity. Everyone here is invested in our community's success. If someone says something that doesn't make sense to you, assume they are just as smart and tuned in as you are, and try to understand how their unique perspective brought them to a different conclusion. I look forward to tonight's meeting, and will now turn the meeting over to our city manager, Nuria Rivera Vandermeide. I hope you all enjoy the discussions and the opportunity to learn with council members tonight.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem, and just a quick welcome as well from me and the organization. I'm excited to see how this experiment is going to work tonight, so just appreciate so much all of our community members, both those that are seated with us tonight and those that applied and did not quite make it through the randomizer, but just appreciate your interest as you thought to participate with us. I wanted to lift up just the efforts. It takes a huge village to put something like this together. And really, Ryan Hansen and our Communications and Engagement Department, and Mark Wolf in our City Manager's Office in particular, but there are a lot of people behind them who worked on this as well, including frankly, all the people behind us in our audiovisual team and our IT team who are hopefully keeping all those gremlins who have been besieging us of late away. And so with that, we are going to start this grand experiment, and I send it over to Derek. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Nuria. Before I get started, did our interpreters need to make a quick announcement? Very good. Thank you. Again, my name is Derek Okubo. I will facilitate tonight's meeting. I work with the National Civic League. This meeting is a part of one of our bigger projects called Building Better Public Meetings, and we've done this in partnership with the city of Boulder. Last year, the National Civic League conducted a study to learn more about public meetings, and I got to give the city of Boulder a lot of credit. I hear around the country all the time that we have to do better. We need more engagement. We have to look at engagement with our community in a different way. Boulder is the only one that I have come across so far that is actually willing to look at doing things differently, to do a study session that includes the active participation of citizens and residents of their community. And so as a result, I really think that Boulder has the potential to become a national model as far as doing things differently, as far as how they engage their community. The report that we sent out earlier this year focused on different ways of doing business with a bunch of different recommendations. This is one of several pilots that the city is currently moving forward on, and that specifically addresses three themes that emerged from the report that we sent out earlier this year. And one is being heard and providing transparency in decision-making. The other is interacting with elected officials at council meetings and doing public comment in a different way, and also including equity and engagement in the processes. So this forum tonight is specifically designed to increase opportunities for meaningful engagement by responding to the community desire that was expressed to engage on council decisions earlier in the decision-making process. So at your seats, you see the agenda for tonight. And what we're going to be doing in just a little bit, the topic tonight that we will be discussing is economic development, the Economic Development Plan and Program Enhancements. We will have a presentation from Mark Wolf, Assistant City Manager, and then we'll have some time for you, our participants here at the table, to ask some clarifying questions. Then we will break into small groups, and we will break into four groups. In those four groups, there will be five community members, two council people, two staff to record. And there will be the discussion for an hour, and then we will come back here, and we'll have a report out, more clarifying questions, and then talk about next steps. So again, I'm really excited too to see how this turns out, and the staff have prepared very hard. And again, I praise the city of Boulder for taking the step to try something different that other communities are afraid to do. Let's go through some introductions here, and I'll start off again, and we just keep them really brief. I want your name, your pronouns, and the organization or role you play in the community. So again, my name is Derek Okubo, him, he/him/his, and I am from the National Civic League. And we'll go over here, Mayor Protem.
And I'm Mayor Protem Nicole Spear, she/her pronouns, and from the city of Boulder.
Nuria Rivera Vandermeide, she/ea, city of Boulder, city manager.
And one thing, yeah, use the microphones so that the video can pick up your voice. And you have to press the button correct in order when you talk.
Teresa Taylor Tate, I'm the city attorney for the city of Boulder. My pronouns are she/ea.
Hello, I'm Charlene Hoffman. I'm the CEO of Visit Boulder, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and my pronouns are she/her.
I'm council member Lauren Fulker. It's pronouns she/her, and I'm also an architect in the community.
Mike Kaplan, a person in the city. Community, thank you.
Carla Grabard, I'm a resident of Boulder.
Hi, I'm Brian Lewandowski. I'm at the University of Colorado Boulder, he/him.
Hi, Greg Butler, longtime resident of Boulder.
Rachel Garcia, Boulder Small Business Development Center Interim Center Director, she/ea.
Mark Wolf, he/him, Assistant City Manager for the city.
Adriana Paula Palacios Luna, uso los pronombres ella/la, she/her/ea. And I'm, yeah, a small business from Luna Cultura.
Thank you. Diana Capal, she/her, and I'm a resident and small business owner in Boulder.
Taisha Adams, she/her pronouns, Boulder City Council and Small Business Owner.
Thank you. I'm Dan Powers, he/him, Director of Colabs, a nonprofit consortium of the federally-funded research labs here in Colorado and Boulder.
David Molnar, he/him, resident of Boulder.
Tina Markwitz, she/her, City Council.
Carla Colin, President of the Latino Chamber, she/her/ea.
Henry Lester, he/him, I'm a resident of Boulder.
Matt Benjamin, he/him, council member and small business owner.
Patrick Dorian, he/him/his, Business Equity Project and Program Manager for the city of Boulder.
Bettina Swigger, CEO Downtown Boulder Partnership, she/her.
Michelle Rodriguez, peer support, lived experience, most recently volunteering with the Community Court Pilot Program.
John Tare, he/his, and I am the Boulder Chamber President and CEO.
Hi, Ryan Schuhart, he/him, City Council.
Hi, Neil McBurnett, he/him, resident of Boulder.
Sharon King, formerly with the SBDC, formerly a business owner, resident of Boulder, she/her.
Chris Jones, he/him, Director of the Community Vitality Department at the city of Boulder.
Jamal, business owner, Community Connector.
Tara Weiner, Boulder City Council, Small Business Owner.
Very good. Welcome, everyone.
She/her.
Thank you for being complete. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for participating. Very excited. So just a reminder that tonight's forum is on Economic Development Plan and Program Enhancements. And so with that, I'd like to pass it over to Assistant City Manager Mark Wolf.
Thank you very much. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks again. We are very excited for the conversation tonight. Want to extend appreciation to NCL, staff, as Nuria mentioned, council, and community for joining us tonight. Especially want to recognize Jennifer Pincino, the city's Economic Vitality Manager, who is under the weather tonight. Timing, and it's that time of year, you know, so she can't be with us. I just wanted to lift up her work. She's a driver of so much of this work for the city and has had longstanding contributions to our local economy. So I'm sorry you won't be able to see that in real time, but I know she wishes she was here tonight. She was behind a lot of the content tonight, so I am stepping in for her, especially during this presentation. So if you enjoy the content, it is all Jennifer. If you don't, it's probably my delivery, so apologies for that in advance. A theme you will hear throughout this evening is that economic vibrancy or vitality is an effort across many organizations. While the city has played an important role in economic development, that role has traditionally been in more of a supporting role. Most of the traditional economic development work has been carried out through our many partner organizations across the community. Many of our partners are here at the table this evening and also contributed to the content presented this evening. We'll also be inviting their perspectives to help share some flavor during the presentation. And before I dive into the content, I just wanted to extend deep appreciation for our Economic Vitality Partners. Again, thank you for taking time out of your Thursday evening to join us, but also for the deep partnership that we enjoy with you that helps contribute to the vibrancy in community. One of the reasons we are having this particular conversation is because we are at a moment of inflection four and a half years after the pandemic began. If we're reminded what COVID is these days, it's still around, but I think it's important to acknowledge that the impact of COVID is still being felt to many of our businesses. And it was the strength of this partnership that, in its ability to quickly react to the pandemic, share information, provide support, that helped many in our business community weather the storm. But that impact is still being felt, and we're going to talk through some of those challenges that we face and how we might address those moving forward. All right, so for the presentation this evening, most of it is going to be shared at a pretty high level. We want to provide some general context as to why we're having this conversation, some of the economic conditions that we face today. Brian Lewandowski will help with that portion of the presentation. And then we'll tee up the conversation for the small groups. And again, you have some of the background information, but this presentation is meant to get your wheels turning as you head into those small group discussions. And we'll prompt a couple of different questions. These were shared in advance. Essentially, we're asking all of you, we'll share some background information on where we see the economy today, but all of you have experiences every day in the local economy. We want to understand from your perspective where there's particular issues that need to be addressed, and also as we share out some drafts, some high-level strategies that we may look at in a new economic vitality strategy, which we'll talk more about. What's missing? What would you add to such a strategy moving forward? So those are two of the key questions. Just plant those in the back of your mind as we go through the presentation. All right, so while some of the content tonight is an opportunity to showcase some of the great work that is being done, and you'll hear some of that in the presentation. As I mentioned, it's also important to note that we are talking on the topic in part because of the struggles that continue to face our business community. To that end, council established a priority during the council retreat in April that focused specifically on Economic Development Plan and Program Enhancements. Looking at the environment after the pandemic was a big part of that, and also updating a very old strategy. We currently have an Economic Sustainability Strategy. It's great. It was developed in 2013. The world looks different today than it did in 2013. We also, as a part of that priority, acknowledge some of the other conditions and emerging issues which we'll talk about, and how do we react to certainly a plan or a strategy as an element of that, but also how do we move quickly and nimbly to address some of the challenges that we currently face? That relates to some of the commercial vacancies, other issues that we're seeing, and enhance the toolbox for economic development strategies overall. So we'll run now quickly through some of the current market conditions. I think it's helpful to look at our overall economy, just some quick points here. So we have about 8,400 employers in the city, mostly businesses. That is over 100,000 employees. That's over $10 billion in wages. Our largest industries: professional and technical services, government, manufacturing, tourism-related industries, healthcare, retail, and information. 90% of our employers have fewer than 20 employees. So we talk a lot about small business support. The vast majority of our businesses are small businesses. And large employers also play a critical role, having, providing 54% of the jobs in the city. There's a high concentration of employment in advanced industries: aerospace, beverage manufacturing, IT software, life sciences, and broadband digital communications, more than twice the national average in those high-concentration areas. And we enjoy one of the nation's most educated workforces. So what have we seen post-pandemic? We've seen job gains and losses in different industries. The largest gains have been in the professional and technical, information and manufacturing industries. We've seen the largest losses in accommodations and food service. Certainly reflects national trends, but we have felt that impact here: healthcare, government, retail, arts, entertainment, and recreation. We are all very aware of the lingering challenges for retail restaurants and personal services. I'm sure a subject that will come up tonight. And across all industries, what we are hearing, what we have surveyed throughout the pandemic, and we are in the middle of a new business survey, that there are rising costs for doing business across all industries and community. There's labor force challenges, shortages, supply chain issues in certain industries continue to linger, and the rising interest rates had large impact. Obviously, those are coming down, but certainly still impact business. Okay, so that's at a very high level, and now Brian will help us a little bit more with the economic context.
All right. Thank you, Mark, and thank you to council. Thank you to staff and to all of you community members that are here for this conversation. So I was asked to provide a very high-level overview of where we are in the economy right now to provide a little bit of context and talk about the current conditions. So I think to start off, generally, when we take a look at how the economy is doing right now, things are fairly stable. There were a lot of expectations that the economy was going to slow down pretty rapidly and that we could even be in a recession right now, a lot of this chatter last year, and it really didn't materialize. And so while I'm going to present a little bit on how stable or perhaps how good the economy may be, I still acknowledge that there are unique struggles within segments of the economy, and Mark touched on some of that. If it's manufacturing, for instance, is going through its own cycle right now. Companies, individual companies are experiencing some struggles, and individuals are experiencing struggles, so I'm not really trying to diminish any of that when I share some of this with you. So just very broadly, US gross domestic product grew at 3% in the second quarter. That's a pretty good rate of growth, and you might say, well, there's a lot of inflation in the economy. This is after we adjust for inflation, so that's real GDP growth. It's real output, meaning that we're producing more, we're selling more within the economy. And a lot of this is still driven by consumption, so consumption was up about 2.8%. And so we worry about that. We worry about consumption. We worry about households and how they can sustain that growth. But for the most part, when we look at 3%, we say that's a pretty good rate of economic growth. And when we reflect on last year, 2023 grew just shy of 3% for the full year. So we never really hit that downturn that we were expecting. And we still hear chatter of a recession still, but I think there's many reasons why we're not headed for that imminently, right? So I think point number one here is labor market pressures are easing, and for you business owners, you might balk at that a little bit and say, I'm still having a hard time finding workers. But what we do see is that the pace of job growth nationally has been slowing, so I put averages up here. There's the monthly numbers, and then there's the annual averages for how many jobs we're adding per month in the national economy, right? So 600,000 in 2021, down to 377 in 2022. These are recovery years from the pandemic, and we got back to peak employment in 2022. 2023, this expectation that we are back to peak, how can we add this many jobs? We still added 251,000 per month. And then in 2024, now we've slowed to 184,000 so far per month. It's like, well, that's quite a slowdown, but for context, back in 2018 and 2019, we were growing about this many jobs per month. So we're sort of back on that usual path. So how tight is the labor market? We take a look at job openings nationally, and we take a look at the number of unemployed people nationally. And so we sort of consider that crudely as a measure of supply and demand for workers. And so what the red line is showing you here is that we got up to the highest level of job openings ever in the country. And now those job openings have started to come down, and it's converging with the number of people who are unemployed. So there's still 1.1 job openings per unemployed person in the national economy. So it still shows there's somewhat of an imbalance, but it's converging. So it's moving a little bit towards more of an employer's market, but it's not there yet. So that's one reason why I say the labor market tension is easing a little bit. In Colorado, that divergence is still pretty wide. It's at 1.5 or 1.6 job openings for every unemployed person, and it actually got a little worse last month. So we're in the top 10 for the rate of job openings when we compare Colorado to the rest of the country. So yes, it's still a tight labor market. It's not as tight as it was, okay? Two, I think it's important to note that inflation is normalizing. So you might go to the grocery store and say, well, gosh, my cereal is still $5 or $6 a box, and that's true. Prices are not going back to where they were, but now they're back to increasing at what we would normally expect prices to increase at, right? So we're between 2 and 3% right now. And Colorado, just for context, for 11 of the last 14 years, Colorado has had higher price growth than the US overall. So things got more expensive here and stayed higher for longer, and now we're actually on the leading edge a little bit on the way down. So we get Denver metro inflation data every other month. Last month, Denver metro was at 1.9%. US was at about 2.5%. So we're actually coming down faster than the US, and part of that is because we've had some slower housing inflation. It's the first time I've said that in a long time. Slower housing inflation than the country, and we've had some lower fuel prices than the country overall. So I think that's generally good news that we're getting back to a normal path there. Interest rates are decreasing. It doesn't mean that they're low, but they're coming down, and you can see it on this chart. The Federal Reserve cut interest rates by half a percent last week. And so they're really controlling short-term interest rates. But what you can see is that those long-term interest rates, the 30-year mortgage rate, actually followed suit and dropped, so I think that's welcome news for homeowners and for people who are looking to enter the housing market for the first time. So there's, I mean, still 6% is a rate that's high, and there is a whole generation of people that never saw 6% interest rates. So it's not good, but it's better than where we were a year ago and two years ago. So very briefly, I'll talk about Colorado and the local area. So we like to benchmark Colorado to the rest of the country, just to keep track of how we're doing. And for a long time, we were in the top five, top 10 for economic growth by almost every measure, and now we look a little bit more average. So 13th for GDP growth, 27th for employment growth, population growth, we're 17th, and so on. But there's a few measures here where we're sort of exceptionally high, you know, good or bad. Average annual pay, we're seventh highest in the country. And labor force participation rate, we're fourth highest in the country, which speaks a little bit to the youth of our state, as well as perhaps the need to work in the state because of some of the costs of living here. So this slide shows Boulder's employment and population. So first thing I'll point out here is, so this is Boulder MSA or Boulder County, because we get this data on a very high frequency. It comes out every month. The local employment is hovering around the highest level ever. So we've never had more jobs in this community. When we take a look at labor force locally and statewide, we're hovering around record levels. We've never had more people that raised their hand to work in the state before. Unemployment is on the rise a little bit, but I think it's, again, that good sign for the supply of workers, that you have a lot of people that are opting in who want to work. On the right side, it's showing population change. And while it looks like the net migration piece, so the net of people moving to Boulder County versus moving away from Boulder County, it's positive, which is certainly a good thing, in my opinion. The issue that I see here is when we talk about the net of 300 or 400 or 500 people moving to Boulder County, that's a fraction of where we were five, six, seven years ago. And those migrants to our community are a source of labor today. So when we think about trying to fill jobs, we also need those people to be here to fill those jobs. So net migration to Colorado and to this local area has really slowed over the last several years, but we expect it to rise in '25 and '26. So the industries that are adding jobs and shedding jobs, so Mark showed you some data through 2022, I believe, and so what this is showing you is Boulder County in August of 2024. And what we can see is most industries are adding jobs. On the left side, it's in thousands. On the right side, the percent change. But we do have four industries that are under pressure right now, perhaps unique pressure. Trade, transportation, and utilities, which is really retail trade. Trade, transportation and utilities, which is really retail trade, uh wholesale trade. Um, the manufacturing sector, and Boulder has a high concentration of manufacturing and, and high tech, and uh also in food manufacturing, uh, the construction industry and the information sector. So those are four sectors that, that are feeling some unique pain in this expanding economy. And um, uh, but Boulder's, Boulder's employment growth, when we take a look at it year over year in August, about two point four percent. This shows you all three hundred and ninety metro areas across the country. That's what each line represents. And uh, all the red bars are, are Colorado's metro areas. So it's a little comforting to look at that and say, okay, so Boulder's in the top quartile nationally. Um, and we're ahead of all the other metro areas in the state. So we, we're, we are outperforming, but there, there are some headwinds that um, that we, we could face in the near term. Uh, lastly, thinking about taxes, I think about this in relation to the beginning, when I was talking about consumption and what some of those headwinds are. So we can take a look at uh Colorado taxable sales. That's what this should really say is taxable sales in Colorado, and this is, this is the state's tax base. And so what you can see is coming out of the pandemic, there is really a fast rise in taxable sales. And then there's been a flattening. And so when we take a look at, you know, July, uh, it, it was up about one point nine percent. That's, that's pretty modest growth, and when we think about inflation of two and a half percent or so statewide, um, that means that uh, that, that real growth is negative, okay? And then we can take a look at state taxable sales by jurisdiction around Colorado. So I pulled the thirty largest uh jurisdictions in the state. And this is what the state is collecting from these communities. So the same tax base around all of these communities, so it's a nice apples-to-apples comparison. And you can see that the state was pretty slow, one point two percent year over year. And you can see where uh the city of Boulder is, based on the state's tax base, it was up about one percent or so, zero point nine percent. So underperforming the thirty uh jurisdictions on, on average uh year over year. Okay, so just closing this out, um, you know, we, we do still see a lot of tailwinds. Uh, I, I mentioned GDP growth, consumption still seems to be pretty good. Nationally, retail sales uh continue to grow, but at a slower rate. Um, employment growth, sort of uh surprising economists, I think, that, that this has continued. But there are a lot of headwinds that we worry about, right? So inflation has been high, it's coming down, but um, you know, there's a lot of people that have, have struggled through that inflation rise that we went through, and the cost of living has become even more of a burden. Uh, property taxes and insurance is uh difficult for homeowners, for businesses, uh, and, and for renters. That, that cost is being passed through to you somehow. Um, high office vacancy rates are a problem really around the US, but especially in our urban uh corridors, and Boulder is not immune to this. Um, but we, we see some of these other things like interest rates being high, but coming down as, as sort of of uh promising signs. And then there's a group of unknowns. We think about AI as one of these big disruptors at some point, uh, but perhaps not quite yet. And um, things like remote work, are we really going to pull people back to the office? Um, construction, we feel like it's hit bottom. Is it, is it going to start to uh swing up again uh next year? And with that, I'll hand it back to Mark. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Get my clicker back. Okay. All right, so a little bit more local context in terms of uh how we provide services. So you've heard more of the here's what's going on in the economy, and now this is a little bit about what we're doing now and where we go from here. Uh, so the, there's a lot of words here, but I think the, the main point uh is that the city has what we call the sustainability equity and resilience framework. It is really our guiding document for everything we do. There are seven community goals that are set forth um in that document. Uh, economically vital is one of them, and so uh that sets forth a vision for how we look at economic vitality across community. We use that definition, that's on, on the slide and included in the materials, uh, to develop uh our strategies for how we, we implement or how we strive for that vision. And so that is really found in the citywide strategic plan. Uh, for those that don't know, the citywide strategic plan is, is a newer thing. Uh, we had not had a citywide strategic plan uh in the past. Uh, what uh we did was look at many uh forming documents, many documents, that policy documents that were created uh as a part of uh alongside of community with engagement and developed uh a document that could help focus our work over a three-year period. Two of those strategies were very related to this economic vit- economic vitality work, uh specifically related to building a resilient economy that focused on some of our uh core strengths, uh promotes economic mobility and aligns with community values and priorities. And then also recognizing some of the areas that we can continue to improve. Uh, processes and, and housing, parking, infrastructure, land use and events that tie directly to some of our uh priorities. And how we accomplish all of that work, again, is, is through our deep collaboration with partners. Our, our greater focus on business formation, retention and expansion, of flexible and nimble approaches that build on our strengths and can respond to challenges quickly, and then coordination, recognizing that uh we're not alone. Um, uh, and economic uh vitality often doesn't end at the city borders as well. And we do provide a number of services to help support uh our business community and promote economic vitality. Uh, again, this is done through, through our partners, business outreach and assistance with a focus on small businesses. An example of that, the city is the, the host for our Small Business Development Center, so that, that is a key partnership in providing uh those services. Disaster assistance, diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility support, economic and market research, education and training, coaching, workshops, events, financial support, so direct grants, microloans, incentives and workforce development. So again, some of these are Direct City. Many of these are provided through partnerships. Okay, so we're gonna run through just uh quickly. Uh, you heard uh some from Brian, so I'm not gonna uh explain all of these. But this is really to set some context on what are we seeing in the economy from a strengths, weaknesses perspective? And this will help um inform our discussions in small groups. And then at the end of these, I'll go through them re- relatively quickly. I'd like to invite some of our economic vitality partners to, to weigh in or just briefly kind of su- suggest anything that you, you are particularly seeing that you'd like to point out. Our economic strengths, you heard a lot of them, quality of life and our natural environment. Uh, we are a popular tourist destination. That certainly helps from an economic perspective. Excellent public schools and healthcare, access to multimodal transportation, regional housing options. We'll talk about on the downside of some of those options uh in a moment. Uh, broad, uh, broad mix of industries and jobs, our research, university and federal labs, the high concentration of advanced industries, reputation as an innovation hub, our collaborative, resource-rich business environment, and we have a well-educated, highly skilled workforce. On the flip side, so some of our weaknesses, cost of living, including that housing that I mentioned, the cost of doing business overall, we consistently hear that as an issue. The availability of industrial and warehouse space, so that's a little bit different than the commercial vacancies that we're seeing. Uh, lack of uh retail restaurants, personal services in some of our employment areas, limited workforce housing, so again, the housing challenge shows up there. Um, traffic and uh transit connections, lack of diversity at both within community and workforce, lack of awareness of available resources that do exist. The reputation for challenging regulatory environment, I, I'll give some kudos to Brad Mueller and his team for some of the recent improvements, but certainly that reputation precedes us uh unfortunately in some areas. And then uh broadband service, the limited broadband service options. All right, so what are some emerging trends uh here to pay attention to from an economic perspective? We, we have more frequent uh threat of natural disasters, more occurring and the threat of, certainly something to keep in mind from a resilience standpoint. Uh, aging population and workforce, uh decreased birth rate. Brian talked a little bit about migration. Uh, higher incidence of online shopping, so that ha- has an impact on our local retailers. Uh, increase in remote working, employment decline in retail restaurants and other industries that generate sales tax, so that compounds our, our city problems, our, our city organizational funding problems. Uh, increased uh costs for businesses and increased uh regulations uh for businesses, and we're seeing some of these more recently. And related to many of these, some of the emerging uh issues, the high commercial vacancy rate and the impact on economic activity within our commercial districts, the increased cost of leasing commercial space, some of that is related to property tax, uh continuing workforce and supply cha- chain issues, less access to capital and financial resources for businesses. Uh, we, more frequent power outages, again, that resilience uh, uh conversation. Potential impact of min- minimum wage increase on businesses, increased competition for businesses and workers from other communities. Uh, less recognition for Boulder as an innovation hub, more competition certainly in that uh realm. Shifts in our reputation and perceptions about personal sa- safety, and then many cities are facing the end of federal ARPA funding and what that means from a city funding perspective. And last, there are many opportunities as well. Um, uh, quantum technology home, uh potential for private and federal dollars flowing into this uh sector of the economy. Uh, the climate resilience innovation en- engine, again, an opportunity for federal funding. Leveraging the federal chip zones and other federal incentive programs, our life sciences industry growth. A festival may want to relocate, and we're super excited about being a finalist uh for the Sundance Film Festival and perhaps uh helping with uh some sectors of our economy. Uh, CU Conference Center and Hotel being completed, uh some of the recent work on University Hill and revitalizing that area. Uh, diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility programs, and increased focus both in the business and government uh communities. And then industry sector workforce partnerships and educational institution and business partnerships as well. Whew, okay, so that's uh all of those. Uh, and just briefly, and I know we want to get to our small group discussion, I, I'm wondering if any of our Group, yeah, great. So a couple more slides just on the, the strategy, but on the, on the trends piece, just wondering if any of our economic vitality partners want to emphasize anything in particular that they heard.
Okay, so I'll just offer just a couple things. So first of all, we're sitting here, um, and we just went through a parade of horribles in terms of some challenges that we face, but I start with sort of the, the Yogi Bear line where uh, you know, it's, it's so crowded, nobody goes there anymore. I mean, we are a community that is still so desirable for business, for residents. Um, so we should always have that reflection. Um, but it creates challenges for us. So when we think about the cost of doing business in our community, we should always be thinking about how do we not do any additional harm first um in adding additional expenses to um the cost of doing business? And then thinking about then, how do we reduce the cost of regulatory um processes, et cetera? Um, but I just also want to emphasize that there are some just very exciting trends um that we're seeing, and that partly is associated with the, the dynamic research and innovation that we have um as a foundation of our historic uh strengths of our economy, which brings to us great opportunities like the quantum tech hub, which is one of those great um attractors for business associated with research that we have um as a center here that I think is something that we're gonna want to build on and, and uh build towards for the future. So a couple of just things to think about when we're facing, we tend to approach these things with challenges. But we do have so much here in our, our community to uh be uh thinking about as a positive strength and to build on.
So much, is that still on? Good, yeah. Um, I, so really interesting presentation. You know, I wish I had more of it in the intro packet, cause that was dense with great information. Thank you. Uh, one thing though, I'm surprised to not see um really a, as a major focus, intractable though it is, is AI. I mean, I think we all uh see the disruptive uh already impact of AI, uh, and we expect way more of it in the future. You know, there are bright people in Colorado and in CU and, and other places that have some ideas. I'm really active in the Rocky Mountain AI interest group. Um, Colorado just passed a law that is scaring to death a lot of entrepreneurs in the AI space, so you know, I, I wonder if anybody has thought about that enough to like tell us as a group anymore or, you know, I, I just would welcome a little more focus there.
Thank you so much. Uh, Bettina Swigger with the Downtown Boulder Partnership. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the opportunities that we're facing, and one of the biggest takeaways I saw was the figure that ninety percent of the employers in Boulder have fewer than twenty employees. And that really says that the majority of the business that's taking place in Boulder is small business. Um, and I see that every day in our work um at the Downtown Boulder Partnership. I know we've developed a bit of a reputation as being the rodeo drive for outdoor sporting brands. Um, and that's really important in terms of driving um tourism and um bringing in people who are looking at that kind of high-end apparel. But there are approximately eighty restaurants in twenty twenty-four downtown, and seventy-two of those are locally owned and operated. Um, there's a hundred and fifty-four retailers and a hundred and fourteen are locally owned and operated. Um, and there are two hundred and seventy-two businesses total, and that means that two hundred and twenty-one of those are locally owned and operated. So um, I bring those figures and I, Brian, I really appreciated your information, but it seemed like there was a little bit of a sort of doom and gloom around retail and restaurant. And um, I just want to highlight the successes of our downtown. Um, I also want to draw attention to the opportunities that we have with our incredible arts and cultural community here in Boulder. Um, we have such a wealth of tremendously diverse art forms and art makers, and I think that would be a really wonderful thing to um capture, and Sundance Film Festival is amazing. We also have a lot of local arts opportunities that are happening that do a lot to support the local economy. Thank you.
Re- repeat that one more time, Carla. Question is who leads the effort to, for the Sundance Festival?
There is a group of us that are leading it, but I'm the main lead for the Sundance Film Festival coming to, to Boulder, starting in twenty twenty-five. Fingers crossed.
Yeah, other clarifying questions, and go ahead and use the microphone. And if you're on this row, I'm gonna have to have you stick out your hand this way so I could see you.
Um, this is a macro question, but I always think of CU as the kind of elephant in the room in terms of the Boulder community and the Boulder economy. And how does Boulder, the cit- city factor in the huge population and economic engine from CU?
I might add to that uh question, and feel free for others to jump in. Just CU is such an important uh partner for us in a variety of ways, certainly from an economic perspective. Um, they're, they're a huge player, um, vital to our, the health of our local economy. Um, you know, the, the city, speaking just for the city, the city and the university are linked in so many ways, and so uh beyond uh all the great um research uh functions, um, just, just the number of folks, the, the people coming into work, the students, uh, it's such a, a huge influence on our economy. And um, the, you know, the city uh is, is bigger and broader than just the university as well, and so it's super critical partner and um, and, you know, we value that partnership. And the economy is also much more diverse than, than the university in and of itself, as important as it is. Neil's question about AI, we never uh went back to that. Does anybody have anything to um, answer as far as It's a su- it's a super good question. Um, I, I think we've thought a lot about it as an organization. Um, but beyond that, I don't know if any of our uh partners would, would have anything from an industry perspective to be able to add. Go ahead. Is it Dan?
Yes, uh, Dan Powers with Co-Labs. Actually, building on the theme that John had mentioned, I know within the various federal labs, many of them being joint research institutes at the University of Colorado, there are intentional programming and research projects that are bringing in artificial intelligence to help ramp up the otherwise uh rapid discovery process that is already happening within those labs. So in a very positive way, the ability for different kinds of problems in bioscience and in aerospace research and in robotics and in quantum computing are all being advanced uh very intentionally as much as possible with artificial intelligence. So to the extent that they ripple effect of entrepreneurs partnering with those labs or otherwise starting businesses as they spring out of those labs, that is a force for growth in new industry paradigms that ideally will serve our economic prosperity here.
John?
Couple things. So I wanted to respond quickly to the question about the university. Um, so I would say that there's a reason why Boulder in eighteen
Um, so I would say that there's a reason why Boulder in eighteen seventy-six took the midnight ride down to uh Denver to buy the land to build the University of Colorado and claim it here. And that is because it is a key cornerstone of our economy. Um, when you think about um the innovation that happens that comes out, the research dollars, when you think about the students uh spending, um, all of these things are generators for small business activity as well as many foundations for the industries that are so critical to um Boulder's uh e- economic strength, so just want to lift that up as as a key foundation. And then one other issue that just I have to lift up and um I think it's just a s- uh uh, so one of the general uh conditions of the melees that we're feeling around town and that is the office vacancy issue, it was high on the list. Um, it's clearly uh having repercussions in terms of the activity in our small businesses, the restaurants, retailers are feeling that impact. Um, as well as the commercial property owners are 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 feeling the pinch from it, so. I would say that for me, that's an area of focus that we as a community need to get a better strategy around and look at all the options um to addressing and and filling those office spaces.
Very good, okay, let's go with Carla and then I'll come over to you, David.
Thank you so much, I just wanna bring something up that sometimes um micro businesses get put in the same bucket as small businesses and that's not the case, there is a huge difference. And like Bettina was mentioning, there are a, they have a huge impact in our communities, but most of them are home-based or run by families and that it's not only small business, but it employs four or five people within the same household. So I just want to make sure that we all have that clarification because we see it a lot in the Latino and other underserved communities and that's a huge impact. And then another thing that we've seen it within the Latino Chamber as an identity chamber serving the whole county and the surrounding areas is that in average and because we don't have demographics on um all the businesses registered in the Secretary of State um and within municipalities, the Latino Chamber as an organization of identity and serving underserved communities, Latino and BIPOC um, community members, we're only covering with the ca- at the capacity that we are right now, we're only covering thirty percent of the businesses um that that identify as BIPOC or Latinos. So we obviously don't have the capacity, but we are the only organization serving um as an identity chamber, so that's that's a big impact on our community. And we wish we could do more and we are doing as much as we can, the best that we can, but that's a big impact with migration coming. Uh, most of the migrants that are coming to um the area are monolingual or feel more comfortable doing business in Spanish. And most of them coming for from Central and South America need the necessi- have the necessity of their culturally competence. And when they decide to become business owners, it's that micro business uh that has not the capacity to employ people at a high rate that we're used to um in the Boulder County area and obviously most of them cannot survive more than a year or two in business if if the capacity of employing people is is at a high rate.
David and then Mayor Pro Tem Spear.
I'm wondering what metrics are we thinking about to measure the extent to which the economic vitality program is successful? Especially distinct from the success of the economy, local economy, because not all of the success of the economy can be attributed to the economic vitality program.
That's a great question, um, I'll answer part of that, I I think one thing that we've been doing over the last few years as a city is trying to use data better to make decisions, right, and so in some areas we were really good and in some areas not so much, and so we've spent a lot of time thinking through what our intended outcomes are across all of our goals, the citywide strategic plan is a big part of that. Um, we've taken strides forward, but we still have a lot of work to do in in measuring impact of of our investments. Uh, in this way, part of our economic vitality strategy um is to gather baseline data to start, and so that process is underway. Uh, some of the macro data will be a part of that, but we're also doing things like uh surveying businesses to uh get a baseline for what they're experiencing and so it's an opportunity to to do a little bit of measurement then throughout the the implementation of a strategy. Appreciate that question, we do have just a few more slides.
Okay.
Do you want me to finish that up or?
Uh, let's see, why don't we, why don't you go? Okay, you could hold, i- is it on this topic, you go, go ahead, ask your question and we'll go to the slides. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to underscore a few things that have been said by John Bettina and Mark about our tourism state in Boulder. Um, lifting up that Boulder is a beautiful place for people to come, we have so many assets. And I guess my concern is Bettina's comment of these small independent um restaurants and um organizations downtown and John's comment about the increased costs for some of these places to um stay in business. And believe it or not, speaking, you know, as the tourism person for the community, I don't want Boulder to turn into another bold or another tourist attraction. The reason people come to Boulder is because we're we're unique. And if we lose some of these independent restaurants and these small businesses that give us the flavor and the special sauce of Boulder, I'm concerned as an emerging issue that some of these increased costs are going to jeopardize all the businesses that we have downtown, so I just want to underscore um some support for our small business community, specifically the restaurants and the service providers who could be impacted by the minimum wage increase. We all realize that um there is a part of our community that actually needs to make ends meet and I totally support that and 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 understand that. But what I'm concerned about is that we're going to make other businesses in town that are vital to our vitality to not be able to make ends meet, so I think there needs to be some more discussion on how we can compromise in that really great area for these specific sectors that we're dealing with, thank you.
Yeah, these are quick, uh, it it frames the second question that we're asking folks in their small groups, so I just wanted to make sure we covered it. Um, so these are draft focus areas for a new strategy. Again, council um wanted to do this early in a process, so these are not final focus areas or strategies, but we want to give you an idea of what might be in a strategy and so your feedback on these draft strategies uh is a big part of the conversation tonight. So what might be in a new uh economic vitality strategy to address some of the challenges and and take advantage of some of the opportunities that we've heard about? Um, we're looking at these perhaps in four different pillars of a strategy across equity, resilience, vibrancy and innovation. In equity, that could be uh women and minority-owned business support, so broader support than what we're currently doing. Outreach and assistance for businesses, workforce initiatives and looking at our city procurement practices, which is already underway. Uh, resilience, uh, business disaster preparedness and recovery, climate-conscious business practice support and supporting a diversity of industries and retailers and community. For vibrancy, the, anything from amenities and infrastructure to our overall quality of life. Commercial district vibrancy, which we had a co- a conversation last week with council about tourist- tourism support and partnerships, business retention, expansion and retra- attraction. Uh, innovation, uh, supporting entrepreneurship, emerging creative industries, uh startup and incubation, exploring new tools and programs and continued focus on city process navigation and process improvements. So what are some sample actions that might we might take in a strategy? Uh, again, sample being the key word here, from from uh in the equity pillar, this could be developing city contract and supplier diversity programs and policies. Expanding specific support for BIPOC and wo- women-owned businesses and look at broader workforce development initiatives. In resilience, that could be strengthening uh business disaster preparedness and recovery programs. We could enhance small business support programs, some of those direct assistance programs and update our citywide retail strategy. In vibrancy, we could, um, and and we talked a bit about this last week, but exploring a downtown development authority, which could be an investment tool for for the broader downtown area, explore and support tourism improvement districts, which is something uh on council's uh docket. Uh, development uh of programs to attract businesses to occupy vacant spaces, so mention the uh commercial uh vacancy issue. And last, in innovation, support industry-specific programs including uh shared spaces. Uh, leverage federal chip zones and other grants or incentives to support emerging industries. And last, develop strategies uh to help attract and grow emerging industries. So again, not uh comprehensive by any means, but gives you a sense of what might be within an economic vitality strategy.
So we could take just like one or two questions as far as asking uh clarifying questions on what Mark just talked about as far as the draft.
Yeah, I have a question, I think it might be for Brian, I'm just wondering in some of this macroeconomic data, um, how do we or does does the data account for people who have more than one job? Because we have so many people in our community who have to have more than one job in order to make ends meet.
Yeah, um, th- thanks for the question, so when when we get that monthly jobs report, it's counting jobs, it's not counting the people behind it, so if if you've got people working at a hardware store and at a restaurant, um, they're counted as two jobs. Uh, nationally, we can take a look at a series called Multi-Job Holders and we see that that's hovering around record levels right now, but we can't see that information locally. And then there's one more series we can look at, it's the local unemployment data. And that's counting people, it's counting households, um, so if if uh if if we look at that series, um, it's not double counting jobs, it's only looking at people who are unemployed or people who are employed or people who are not in the labor force.
I'm going to go ahead and have us uh look at breaking into our small groups. Um, on your name tag, you have uh the room that you are assigned to. Um, you will have uh, uh, again, five people in your small group, two council people, two uh staff people, all the rooms are on the first floor. And uh, uh, I will be, I'll go around um and let you know the time. Uh, once we're done there, we'll come back up here for a report out. They have uh specific questions that they will be asking you. Um, also, I had strict directions from my colleagues Matt and uh Nick to go around and take pictures because you guys are kind of making history tonight. And so um I'll, if it's okay, I'll come in and just snap a few pictures while you're uh deliberating. So with that, let's go ahead and break and we will uh come back here in an hour. Um, we will um allow you to ask any clarifying questions. We'll have you take a qu- very quick evaluation and that includes those that are observing too, you can take the evaluation as well. Um, and then we'll talk just uh a minute of next steps and we will be done. I, but I will honor, make sure that we end by nine o'clock at the very latest, okay? As scheduled, all right? So how we'll do this is we will have uh each group report out. Let's have each group report out first and then if you have questions, we'll ask when everybody's done there, okay? All right, so if a question comes up, write it down and and you could bring it up, okay? So with the first group, let's go to uh Taisha and Nicole. Uh, have you, oh, wait, Taisha, I think, left. Okay, okay, so yeah, you could go ahead and start.
Oh, okay.
So if uh, on the report outs, you keep it between five and ten minutes, that would be ideal, okay, so go ahead.
All right, thank you, um, I'm going to summarize our group's uh first question responses and then Taisha will take it for the second one, we'll chime in uh as needed as we forget things. Um, so one of the things that came up in in our first question discussion uh was a, a few people talking about not hearing um environment in the plan. Um, and, you know, thinking about how growing economic development can be very extractive. Uh, tourism, for example, may have some significant environmental impacts. And so there was a question around, as we move forward, how do we connect with and care for the planet? Um, in thinking about the planet as integrally tied to our economy. Uh, we also talked about um equity not really being lifting people up, but having access to the same resources. So how can we make our processes more inclusive um in a way that is empowering? So that it's not just about how we're growing some of these numbers, but also how are we increasing people's quality of life? Um, folks were also talking about um a lack of funding for sustaining some of the nonprofit organizations that contribute to the community. Um, not just in terms of funding for programming, but also funding in terms of sustainable funding for the staff that are carrying out the programming, because a lot of times the programs that are offered um or the grant programs that are offered do not allow for people to uh support staff with that funding. Uh, we talked a bit about um the difficult city processes that we have that make it really hard for businesses to navigate many things, including uh some of our planning and development work. Um, and how it's not just a a question of how we're improving these processes for um streamlining or innovation sake, but that it really becomes an equity issue. Because the people who are able to hire lawyers or spend a lot of time uh figuring out these processes or who have six months to wait for an application to go through, they are typically the people who are already well-resourced. Um, and we really need to think about how our city processes and the navigation of those processes ties into equity so that it's not just people with the resources and money and connections who can navigate those um processes. Uh, out of that came an interesting idea around having a concierge contact at planning and development uh for businesses. Um, and there'll be some other interesting ideas that came up uh in our discussion when we get to the second question. Uh, we, from there, talked a little bit about how um some of the Latino business owners or um others who don't have a lot of legal uh experience are coming to um the Latino Chamber in particular when they have a bad contract that has been signed, uh, but they don't have the resources to pay for um attorneys when attorneys are needed. Um, from that came the idea of having a standardized lease for businesses, something that would help streamline um this process and um have that within a small business support center. Uh, we talked a little bit about how to avoid uh businesses getting um saviors, but really having support that is lifting up the businesses and and their um communities, not by through through uh charity, but really um by by equal access and how we're giving people access to programs and and services and and funding that they're needing. Um, and also just thinking about the life experience training that people have and the knowledge and skills that they're be- bringing um to our community beyond uh the work that they're doing. Um, and, let's see, um, and and just having more support within the cities for uh small businesses um so that it's not just the burden of the chambers to um support all of the the businesses. Um, did I forget anything, Taisha, that stood out for you in that answering the first question? Okay, then that is my summary of the first one, I think we can move on to the second, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much, uh, again, my name is Taisha Adams and I was in the group and I wanted to chat about the focus areas and so one was, and I think it was an overarching one, um, what are these focus areas in service of? What are the measures and metrics of success, what are the tangible outcomes that we're trying to drive towards? Um, it's something that, you know, what do we want um Boulder to be? And so if we want more restaurants that are independent, we need to be explicit in saying what that measure metric is and where we're trying to go. Um, in addition to that, um, we talked about, just, and when we talked about innovation, I'll go on each of the sections, so from an innovation perspective, the need for a big idea, um, something that really brings us together more broadly. Um, and although, you know, quantum is wonderful, we also know that that's not inclusive of everyone. Um, and so what is that big idea that can really bring us together in a in a meaningful and impactful way? Um, under innovation, there was also a request to consider moving or maybe dovetailing the navigation and processes uh into the equity category as well, recognizing that there are not only monetary but linguistic and cultural barriers uh to that process and so in addition to innovating on the process improvements itself, uh, also recognizing that um there's disproportionate access and outcomes in that area. In the category of vibrancy, there was a request to better unpack and define the quality of life component. And so recognizing that historically, our country and our economy has focused on growth, unfortunately, at the cost, right, of our environment and some of the other things that we realize are important to our community. And so when we're talking about quality of life, really unpacking, what does that look like at, you know, education, public education, public health, housing, food security? So just being more intentional and aligned with our economic drivers, measures, and metrics, but also making sure that those are aligned with Maslow's Law or the Blackfeet Law, depending on how long your timeline is. And then for the resilience section, although climate consciousness is included, there was, as my colleague indicated, a desire to be more explicit around that, what that means, and also the economic cost for a climate-ready business. So an example provided was moving from gas to electric, right? There's a cost there, and it's a disproportionate cost there as well. So although I appreciate an increase in consciousness, there also needs to be significant changes in practice, and those practices are going to have a cost. And so there was some desires there from a recommendation on what are the, similar to just transitions for communities that have been chronically disinvested and, and over-toxified, sacrifice zones, for example. And those just transitions, there's also another transition happening for those who may not be facing those conditions, but will still have a significant economic impact for us to have those higher energy and water upgrades. And then lastly, for the equity component, as I mentioned, there was the desire to move the navigation over, but there was also just a need for more data. And I know we've been having that conversation quite a bit about, you know, what are the number of minority-owned businesses? How many, you know, people are having multiple jobs and have multiple employers? It's very hard to be aspirational if we don't have baseline data, so that was certainly requested. And sometimes there's an over-reliance on our business chambers and, you know, this expectation that everybody, our SBDC, has this information, or so-and-so has this information. Who's, you know, whose responsibility is it to have this data and to update this data, recognizing that businesses, you know, close or transition or all kinds of things happen? So just the integrity of the quality of the data was something else that was brought up. Just trying to see if there's anything else. I want to catch all of my pieces. Nicole, anything addition from that? And I, and I see our timekeeper is...
Yeah.
Was that our 10 minutes? You know, I'm very monochronic, so...
Just a couple of quick things I want to get on the record. One was around helping people understand our city budget better, where the money comes from, where the money goes, as part of this economic vitality work. Another was thinking about how we can fix federal problems, especially around small businesses and including undocumented business owners in, in this work. Another was thinking about the changing demographics and how that may change our funding stream, like sales tax. And there was a beautiful idea about having business connectors, kind of like we have community connectors in residence, but business connectors to reach out to some of the groups. So thank you for letting me add a few things.
Boom. Going to add that in here and add the standardized leasing for commercial in multiple languages as another incredible example, and closer alignment with the C U Legal Center. Thank you.
Very good. Next, Matt and Lauren.
All right, I'll start with Q1, and Lauren in our practice session knocked out Q2 like a home run, so she, she lined that one up well. Start with a couple of big themes that covered everything real quick. Linking businesses and people and resources seemed to be just a theme that was quite ubiquitous. The other one, and I hear this when council members Spear and Adams talk about it, and it was clear enough, is the, the word navigation or navigating is sort of used a lot, and it seemed to always be used as a means of a barrier. It was a barrier to achieving success. And so I guess that was just a theme that kind of came through, whether it be, I mean, we've heard it all over. So let me get to Q1. One of the things we heard was facing greater competition regionally was one of those big issues that are those conditions. What, they have cost advantages, some of our neighbors do than we do. And then there's also competition nationally, because we compete at that national stage academically with our labs, and, and certainly with some of our tech businesses. So, so that competition is certainly a condition to consider. And really, what is our future economy? What are the disruptors to today's employment status? Facilitating businesses, navigating emerging threats and opportunities. These are things, again, when you have smaller micro, they are so focused on just the day-to-day, do they have enough money for tomorrow? That sometimes the longer-term planning, which builds that resiliency, may not be present, and so there's an opportunity to help them navigate those threats and opportunities. And then also, again, navigating resources. Business incentives to employ, mentor, or support people with lived experience was another big thing that, that came through. And that's something that we have a bounty of supply for in our community, and so worth leveraging the assets that lived experience provide. And those were a lot of the responses to number one. And so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Fulkert for Q2.
Thanks, Matt.
So for our draft focus areas, we started with discussing microloans and mentoring, and then later kind of folded in apprenticeships, trying to look at both how we can increase these opportunities and how we can pair them together to make them even more impactful. We also discussed tax credit assistance for hiring people with...
Who have been formerly incarcerated or homeless, and also having a mentoring or coaching import portion both for employers and employees to help people better understand the value of those kinds of lived experiences. We also discussed families and small businesses moving east for cost reasons, and how we need to double down on our focus on innovation in order to retain our current economic vibrancy and continue to make sure we understand and focus on controlling, on better understanding what kinds of costs we, as a city council or as a city organization, can help people and businesses control in our community in order to help maintain that small business vibrancy. That's what we got for option two. Did I miss anything, Matt?
No, I think, well, one thing is this sort of Venn diagram between transportation mobility and family-friendly attainable housing, and how those directly impact our economic vitality. So there's a lot of blending that those all have, but awesome. All right, Q3. Who needs to be engaged who's not currently at the table? We had EFA. We also have CU, but also our community colleges. We have Rocky Mountain Equity, and as much as we're talking about groups, and we love our business groups like Downtown Boulder and the Chamber and Latino Chamber, we also want to hear specifically from those businesses themselves and hearing directly from them, because sometimes those unique challenges are things that we can tackle head-on. And so hearing from them direct and also making sure that they know that they have a voice and that their voice can be heard directly from their, to their, can be spoken directly to their elected officials is also key. Unhoused service providers is another group that we think would be important, and then also hearing from groups that represent our increasingly aging population, as well as our undocumented populations. Did I miss any? All right, awesome.
Very good. Thank you for being so concise.
Let's go to Tina next. Thank you for carrying the weight of the group by yourself.
Yes, thank you. Although we weren't alone, we had wonderful groups of people to work with, and I thank David, Carla, Bettina, Michael, and Jamal for this wonderful experience. I really appreciate all of the things you had to say. So we started with the first question, and we spent some time at a high level thinking about how will this economic plan align with the city's goals and income sources? And how do we focus on actions or ideas?
That will also support what the city's goals are. So an example would be if sales revenue is a concern, then are there actions we can take to protect that or increase that revenue? We also talked about internship opportunities between CU and the city. We also talked about the concept of greed and property holders in the city, and how fees are raised that make it difficult for some business owners. We did some talk about the history of Downtown Boulder, which was great, just to think about the changes that have happened in the last 30 years and the different types of businesses in the, the downtown area, and why are we getting there? And that led to another question that was sort of a one and a two, which was thinking about case studies in Boulder, like the Crossroads Mall. What did we do there? How did it change? Where are we now? And thinking about each part of the city, and did we get what we want after we were done with those planning and development and policy and zoning conversations? Are we happy with what we did in those places? So then, in the second area, we spoke about how it's more difficult to come to Boulder and work at Legopeds and afford a house. So we have to think about how can we make that possible? Again, are there incentives we can look at? We spent time thinking about how some of the words we're using are complementary, but also involve trade-offs. So if we want to increase vitality, but also increase wealth of people and businesses, how do we do that together, and how do we find that right balance? We, again, want to define the words vitality and resilience. We want to think about the city and its employees and practices in place to promote the local economy within the city itself. Also thinking about the word innovation, which comes, as I think Matt just said, with disruption, and how do we balance that with preservation? And then thinking about just our whole portfolio of industries. Do we think we're too focused in some areas? Or do we think that because Boulder has built a lot of strength in certain areas, we should continue to recruit in that specific space? So an example might be quantum computing and tech hubs. And then, of course, we talked about steps to refine the permitting hopes, the cost of doing business, as well as a, a really comprehensive platform with information for small business owners that makes it much easier for small business owners to access help in the city. Finally, we looked at partners, and our partners that we thought about adding were the farmer's market, commercial landlords, partner cities that were competing or a co-opetition situation like Longmont. Also Louisville, how are we impacting housing prices in surrounding communities as we bring in more highly-paid employees? Thinking about our retired population, which is extraordinarily educated and motivated, what role could they play in the future? Renters that don't have representation, K G N U, which has access to different audiences even throughout the day, and the Board of Education. So, team, is that good? You're my backup. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And next, Tara and Ryan.
First, I'm going to start with an intro and say that this was a really special time for me, and I think it was pretty successful. So can we pat ourselves on the back, Ryan, Hanchin, Matt, and myself? No, I'm just kidding. It was, what I loved about it personally was I got to know Rachel, Greg. I can't see that far. Neil, whom I'm missing that was in our great group. John, Charlene, and who else? The point is, is that each one of us, oh, and Greg, Greg was incredible. Why I'm saying that is because even though I'm listening to everybody, my mind is fading, and I am having a little trouble focusing at this point with all these great ideas. What stuck out for me was people's stories. So when I go back home, I'm not going to think about everything that all the council members said, because I already forgot everything you said, but I'm going to think about the stories of the individuals. And that's what made this special, right? Because now I could say, well, John really wants us to focus on second-floor vacancies, and here's why, and he made it real. And Greg says that, I don't want to use names, I'm just going to say, somebody, I'm not mentioning names, was very interested in AI, for instance, and talked about... Somebody gave us, you know, perspective on small BIPOC and Latino businesses that we really needed to hear. Somebody had a business in Boulder and left because of many reasons, which we'll talk about another time. But the point is, is this was successful for me because we had an opportunity to actually have conversations with each other, not against each other, not yelling at each other, but with each other to try to create solutions, and that's pretty much what I loved about it. So now I'm going to give this microphone to Ryan, who probably has all the details that I don't.
Okay, yes, I'll provide more of an institutional view quickly. So also, I want to acknowledge Erica Amador and Sam Klusman. Thank you for your work facilitating the conversation. So on the first question on themes, we had four. We started with, with the discussion about homelessness and specifically unsheltered homelessness, and how it is a, in one sense, a perceived drag on what we're trying to do with our economy. But that led to a discussion about how that is also driven, it is driven by a increasingly dualized economy. And there, I think there was some points about lack of, lack of housing, lack of services is an issue, but we fundamentally have a, a challenge in our economy of being able to serve, serve everybody, and we need to take all that into consideration. So that's the first one. Second one, Rachel talked about, she introduced a really important idea about having greater attention to our BIPOC community, and especially our Latino community, and having more robust approaches for outreach, inreach, and community-based services. And I'll give a chance to be corrected on any of this, if folks want to add things. Third one, we talked about office vacancies. John raised this, and we talked about, around it quite, quite a bit. And it, I'll just leave it at that for now, because it'll, it'll come up in focus areas. And then finally, we did talk about AI a little bit, but we actually didn't get into a lot of depth, but I think we all acknowledged, wow, this is a super important, complicated discussion that we should create some more time for. So those are the themes I had. And then for focus areas, I think, I think in general, there was an interest and acceptance of the framework, equity, resilience, vibrancy, and innovation. Rachel, again, kicked off a discussion, I think, about how this, this really does need to be a, a conversation that is both about the business community and also our workforce. And John then talked about how, when we say business community, this is small business in all the different gradations, but then also this, the importance of our, the so-called primary businesses. These large employers that become the customers of the smaller businesses who depend on them to survive. So John made an interesting point that, you know, we were, it, it was, we were inclined to go down these deep-dive discussions, but really, this is about needing all, all of this together. So, oh, and then also another idea that just we, one of the things we need to do is to drive more people and customers into the businesses. That's one of the important things that we can do. And then last but not least, Charlene just asked us to think about, or I guess, asked us to, instead of saying tourism, say visitor economy. That's, that, that connotes more what we're trying to do. Instead of saying tourism, tour, think about the visitor economy, and that, that connotes more of a specialized, unique Boulder, and that we talked about that for a little bit. I think that was it. I don't believe on the third question, we actually got to it on, on who, who we need to talk to. I can give my opinion, but I don't think that's...
I didn't even know we had a third question, Ryan. What do you think? I will say that we also talked about minimum wage, and it was a really interesting discussion, because we also talked about small businesses, microbusinesses, and workers, and how complicated it is to get to that happy place. And John mentioned doing no harm. So in other words, the businesses have already so much stress since the pandemic that we, and they have so many things that are out of our control as council, but there are some things that are, we are in control of, and what can we do to make things better for the small and the microbusinesses? And when we think of microbusinesses, specifically of BIPOC Latino businesses as well. So that was a really interesting discussion.
Very good. Let's give yourselves a hand here before we go to the clarifying questions. So with that, does any of the, any folks have clarifying questions for the other groups? And if you do, please use the microphones.
I get, I guess it wasn't really questions for the clarifying groups, but COPA is a group that I thought should be on board, and I say that for everybody. COPA is coloradoprovidersassociation.org. You could find them. They are lived experience peer trainers to all levels. So for, for like everybody that's sitting in here, there's somebody that's had a unique experience that, bringing that to the table. So for, for like everybody that's sitting in here, there's somebody that's had a unique experience that um bringing that to the table. I guess maybe something for the chamber to have available um for business, business owners and stuff. Um, peer supports for, for all the, all the traumas you go through, just trying to keep, keep um in touch with the community and stuff. Um, I say that because I, I did my peer training through there, um, through MHP. But um, there's, we, we have quarterly uh meetings and stuff and I, I think that's, and for, for that, we don't have any services for the houseless or very many. There's All Roads brochure. I advise anybody to pick that up in the local library. I brought it to Ms. Teresa the other day. We, we have such a plethora of services um that are available to our houseless. It's just about making sure that people know what's available out there, um, putting our money in the right places and making sure that the people are utilizing the services that, that we're actually investing in. That's all.
Very good. Go ahead, Jamal.
Um, always a Debbie Downer. Um, uh, it's been said multiple times. I just want to, by various groups, not just one group. So I just want a clarification on like BIPOC. You said BIPOC businesses and then you said especially Latino or what's the difference?
There is no difference. Um, the Latinos are included in the BIPOC community, but the Latino is the fastest grow uh population in Colorado and many states in the United States. Um, so.
We are all, uh, my, my, my question is though, if we state it that way, that's not inclusive. That's not equitable. That's not all the things that we put on the board up here. And so if we want to stay clear and concise to what we're trying to really do and that's just to move all boats up and be on a even playing field, then we really have to watch our speech. We, we can't say we're inclusive, but only to these and especially these.
I think there needs to, sorry to interrupt you. Uh, there needs to be a specification with the Latino community because it's the majority and it's the fastest growing population. And the one that um us off now is bringing the economy, not only of Colorado, but the United States up. Uh, and, and that's, that has to be very specific to, to that, um, to that population.
I think that's the vision.
Go ahead.
So I agree, our language must be very intentional and we have to be mindful about it. So we don't inadvertently become exclusive where we're trying to be inclusive. And I do want to clarify that, um, at least in our group, when we talked about Chicano and Latino entrepreneurs, it was around Span, Spanish speakers. So if we can make sure, we make that clarification moving forward, there's BIPOC. And then when we're talking about um monolingual Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs, sometimes there's different needs.
Anything, Jamal?
There's monolingual in all culture. So like, i- i- it would be the native population as well. So they, there's natives here that speak mono language. And we are not specifically uplifting them, even though historically we have definitely led to their demise. So I, I'm just saying, just if we want to have an inclusive environment, an inclusive community, a really equitable place, we really must watch ourselves putting ourselves ahead of our neighbors. And, and because it just will end up where we are right now with someone else in the back and someone else at the top. So if we really want to do what we're set out to do, what, what all the words were up here, they were beautiful words. I'm sorry she wasn't here to see her brilliance, but it was amazingly put. But I, I've just really want to uh, to really state that if we're really in this about inclusion and equity and having a inclusivity, all the special buzzwords, I'm sorry. Then please, let's, please let's watch our language. Let's, let's be more inclusive with our language. Uh, i- if we really want that to happen.
Let's go, uh, I'll go with Adriana and then there, I saw him somewhere back here. Okay. Go ahead. You go first.
Yes, and yeah, I totally completely agree with that. We need to be very mindful. How do we use the language? Especially because, and I'm going to talk from my experience with Spanish-speaking communities. Our language can be very discriminated, right? This, because it's a colonizer language, so it, how can we reproduce the same violence that we are fighting? So we, I completely agree that we need to be very aware and put in like, like especially someone or especially a group. It's like, how can we create equity? And we know that justice requires different approaches or maybe one approach from different perspectives to close the gaps. And maybe some communities may have like wider gaps to close. And then, but it's not like especially for this because, I don't know if I'm getting more confused. I need the interpreters right now in there. But what I'm trying to say, and I'm probably going to say in Spanish, request, in, in request. To help. But I, look, well, I'm gonna say in English. To close the gaps, like if you find equity and there's this drawing that probably everybody is uh aware that you have one step, two steps and three steps. And that's what, what is needed, but it doesn't matter what is your background. It's what, what are you doing? What are you needing to close that, that gaps, right? So, and I'm gonna quote a philosopher like, justice is everyone. Para cada quien, para cada cual según sus necesidades, para cada, para cada quien según sus capacidades. For each person according to their needs and for each person according to their capabilities, right?
Thank you.
I really appreciate the conversation around equity and inclusion. It's beautiful. I don't really have anything more to say. You guys are much more understanding and qualified. Um, I just want to make a quick comment. There was something that Nicole brought up about how the tourism, sorry, I even corrected. The visitor economy can impact the environment. And I just wanted to mention that we are working on a program to address that. We got a little sidelined with the Sundance thing coming into town, but we were planning on launching a program this year. So look for it next year on how to educate people when they come into town, how to respect and care for our environment, um, which is obviously needed and something that we care deeply about. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that when I was talking earlier about um not wanting Boulder to be a tourism traction. What I mean by that is that I, I didn't want to see Boulder turn into an ordinary city with brands that are um chain restaurants and chain, things like that. So I do support obviously the, the tourism and um visitor economy. But I just didn't, I just don't want it to change from what it is because what draws people to Boulder is the same thing that draws our community to Boulder and it's the uniqueness of our town. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jamal.
So just um one comment is I didn't hear people talk about taking advantage of the assets that we have. For example, you know, utilizing the infrastructure advantages that we have in the airport is one example. And, and thinking about instead of that as an, a resource that is of concern or maybe housing, but maybe turning that into something that can be developed as a resource for business development going forward. And I think there's other examples like that. So just as we look toward um other elements of sort of the vitality elements and the framework that we think about taking advantage of the infrastructure assets that we have, the bike lanes, et cetera, that are things that are unique assets of our community that we can use as an element of our economic vitality.
We have time for just a few more comments. Taisha?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things I haven't heard. One, um, we haven't talked about waste at all and waste management. And so I just want to lift that up and would be wonderful to have some more stakeholders from our composting, recycling, um, and zero waste communities. Um, also agriculture, you know, I, I mean, I, I love food, I love restaurants, but I also would love to um have more of our ag, our food growers um in these conversations as well. Uh, and not just have heritage uh for our agricultural, but, but actual growing food and innovating in that way. And then lastly, the people for, Centers for People with Disabilities, um, and just some of the accessibility's um that we know we're not, we're going to need for, for those populations as well as for our aging, um, and older and elders. Thank you.
Go, go ahead, Carla.
Um, not in our group, but someone here mentioned needing, uh, wanting to have a big idea. And I actually had thought about that previously and I forgot to bring it up in our group. And I was thinking about, I lived in New York, pre and post Bloomberg and, and Times Square. That was a big idea. Um, and it involved, you know, it made a huge difference in economic vitality, the population, whatnot. Maybe that would be a fun thing to throw out to the community to get started and do a whole process on, we're looking for the next big idea for Boulder. So.
Interesting point.
I also wanted to give a big thanks to other facilitators. Erica, all you, everybody. You guys were so great.
Very good. Anyone, one last comment? Okay. Can you put up that uh QR, QR code? What we'd like to do as we get to the wrap-up is just to have everybody here, um, participants at the table, um, those who observed, please uh go to the QR code and, and take a few minutes just to uh evaluate as we wrap up here.
Do we have any paper copies or of the survey?
Do we? Okay, Ryan will ha, hand out those uh paper copies. So um, as far as the uh, uh next steps, uh, staff will draft a summary of what they've, would have heard and learned in this forum. And you guys were great, you know, as far as participating and sharing all your points. I have to give you all a bunch of credit. But your comments will be documented and it'll be made uh available to council and the public. There's going to be more opportunities, correct? Uh, to uh engage on this economic vitality work in the future. That'll be coming in the coming months, right? And uh, as well as the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So there's going to be more engagement opportunities, more ample opportunities for your input. Let's see, uh, another comment here, we'll be sure to keep participants updated on progress with this economic development plan, uh, including when the plan is reviewed by the council. At that point, they'll reach out uh with another evaluation reflecting on this entire process. Uh, so, no, I just want to give you all credit. I want to give credit to council um and all of you who stepped forward because you care about this community and you took the time to participate with such depth. So I just give you all great compliments and, and I, I thank you for being how community should be, you know, and can be. So uh, with that, any other comments to close with? No problem, because it was my pleasure. Let's see, David had something real quick and then I'll have you close.
I'm imagining that as this sort of experiment uh continues, you'll want to have new voices involved and that's very understandable. But I don't want this to feel like a one-night stand. So there should be a way for people who really put a lot of energy in this to continue to participate as well as new voices.
Yeah, now I'll just say quickly that from a staff perspective, uh, we're committed to making sure that this group is uh well-involved in the progress of the Economic Vitality Strategy and we'll, we'll keep you in the loop. So just very much appreciate everybody's uh conversation tonight, participation. I thought it was a super valuable conversation, so thank you.
I just want to, I, I just wanted to chime in also. I, I heard about this through the League of Women Voters and we have a very active voting methods group that talks about things like citizen assemblies. This is not a citizens' assembly, but you know, I think that would be a very valuable thing. I think Europe has had fabulous success getting through, you know, some of those knotty problems that, that frankly, with no disrespect to politicians, it's hard for a politician to address, but uh easier for uh, uh, an assembly that is just the citizens randomly selected in a way that is uh representative of the population to do cool things. So you know, I hope that this is uh maybe a great model for the study session notion, but that for other kinds of problems, we continue to look at uh, you know, bigger and, and better solutions for hard problems.
Derek, can I just add something? Appreciate that, Neil. We are actually going to be embarking on a community assembly um with regards to our Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan engagement. Um, and that's led by Vivian Castro um on our team here. So we are, we are, we are marching forth in that front.
And in that same realm, as Matt will know.
We could also consider proportional representation on bodies like the city council so that once again, even the council itself can really um, in a, in a way that you can demonstrate that doesn't, that's not vulnerable to gerrymandering, uh, be able to represent the citizens really well. Fabulous. Thank you.
Great. Well, I'm just going to close with some final thanks to everyone who came out to join us tonight um and spent your Thursday night with us. Thank you so much. Thank you to Derek for wonderful facilitation. Um, thanks to our, yeah, one more applause. Thank you to our council engagement committee for really bringing this. Matt and Tara, thank you so much. Um, thank you to council member, former council member friend as well. Um, and staff, my goodness, the amount of work that you all put into making tonight happen. Thank you. This was an incredible experience as a council member. Um, sounds like it was a pretty good experience as a community too. And we are just so grateful for your willingness to innovate and bring this opportunity to us. So thank you so much. Um, as was stated, this is just the beginning of many uh different ways of doing engagement. So um I look forward to hearing from everybody again and seeing some of you and some of these other engagement copper, opportunities that we'll have coming up. So thank you. Have a good night. I will close the meeting at eight fifty-six.